It is five thirty and the work session will be.
Yeah.
I don't think.
Yeah.
The agenda, but I, I didn't see anything else that we needed to do.
No, this is just a work session. Yes. All you have to do is call it to order and then you, if there's anything you want to announce to the council members, you can do that.
Okay. So we're hearing from potential engineering firms and J E O is up first. So.
Fantastic. Sounds like we have the floor.
You have the floor.
Well, good evening, Mayor Smith, City Council, West Liberty team and staff, and we'll get a few team members here. First and foremost, thank you for the opportunity. We know you have a choice in partners and providers that you work with. And we simply appreciate the opportunity to, from an engineering service, municipal services firm, to be one of those entities that has the opportunity to speak with you. Additionally, want to show appreciation to Lee and Sherry and Adam and the rest of your West Liberty team. That for the past number of weeks that we've been in contact with them. And as a former public official myself, I know how it can be challenging just in their day to day operations and keeping things going and responding all the needs and queries. And then in addition to that, you have firms like J E O or others that are thinking, oh, could you make a little time for us? So appreciation has off to them for their assistance with the information we provided. So in front of you, we have nine sheets or nine pieces we'll quickly go through. The intent for us, we know we have a condensed time block of 20 minutes. And I know Sherry's probably going to keep pretty, pretty keen eye on that for us. So we want to be as efficient with that time as possible. We have prepared some comments. Yet we'd like this to be somewhat conversational. So don't hesitate. If you have, you know, immediate question or a comment, don't hesitate to stop us at all. So with that, if you just want to flip to the first page here. And so here with you today, we have myself, once again, Gene Geddes, client manager, client liaison with J E O. I have over 30 years of professional experience, approximately 20 of those are in the private sector with developments. And operations with insurance and finance, finance, and nearly 14 years in the public sector. I was most recently a mayor and a city administrator in a town in southwest Iowa called Harlan, Iowa. I'll speak to a little bit more about that in just a moment. So.
I'm Danny Sturm. I lead our construction services department. I've been in the engineering world for a little over 20 years now. Been with J E O for 10 years and then prior to J E O, I was the city engineer of Atoma for five years. So I've spent my time in the municipal site as well.
And good evening. My name is Kurt Cammon. I am a project manager within our water wastewater electrical group. I'm also the branch manager of the Ankeny office. I've been in the water wastewater world for the past 16 years, last eight of which have been with J E O and it's a pleasure to be here this evening.
In addition to these three friendly faces you have in front of you here this evening, we're simply three of a team of over 400 professionals and experts that work across J E O. That would be on call and here to support West Liberty. You're, we're the three chosen, three lucky ones to get to address you here this evening. If you'd like to go ahead and flip to your next sheet there, that the top left talks about the J E O background. Quick overview background regarding J E O. We're a firm that's been in business nearly 90 years. Again, that's nine zero years. And just below that, you'll see a full service firm. And it's likely easiest for me to explain or for us to explain what it is that we don't do because as a full service architectural engineering and planning firm. We pretty much do everything other than aviation or airports. So that's probably the simplest way to explain it. Looking towards the bottom of that page is a map or pictorial representation of where we exist. Our headquarters, we were founded in Wahoo, Nebraska. Our headquarters remain in Wahoo to this day. Wahoo, interestingly, interestingly enough, if you're familiar with that area, has a lot of similar characteristics in size as West Liberty. Quite fitting. In addition, the three of us standing before you, as well as many of the J E O staff and team members. Either presently reside in or presently served in or have background in rural Midwestern communities. We like to say that's inherent in our DNA. Back to the top of this page and then we'll go on to the next. We have, we are able to serve and have served as the city engineer for 170 other communities. As their primary engineer that again, Midwestern based, very similar to West Liberty. And with that, if you'd like to turn to the next page. And you should see a couple of circles and a few photos. The outer ring, outer ring speaks to each of the disciplines or functions as I spoke earlier about. It's easier to say what it is we don't do at J E O and all of those disciplines are recognized in that outer circle. On the inner circle are a few of the faces that represent a few of those disciplines that will likely be most pertinent to what we understand the immediate needs in West Liberty. The, the guy at the top of that chart there in the circle, that's the smiley old gene here. That in my role as a client liaison, client manager. And what that means is in my role, I'll be dedicated to West Liberty, your primary pony contact. Phone, email, text. Again, I've met a few of the team members already. I'm certainly not the expert, yet with my 30 years of experience and over 13 years as a previous administrator and mayor. There's not much I probably haven't seen or experienced or touched. And my role will be to serve as that contact and conduit to the 400 other experts to best serve and support West Liberty. Then we'll quickly go counterclockwise, Kurt Campman, and he'll talk further about water wastewater. Matt Colleen at the nine o'clock hour. In addition, we have electrical in-house. Electric engineers and staff in-house. Andrea Gettard, our engagement team. Danny will talk further about that as we talk about transportation and project we did in Mount Vernon and the critical component that engagement played with that. Corey Broderston, some of the team met Corey on a previous call. We know that the E L C here in your community is an opportunity, maybe looking some remodeling and architectural things there. And that would be Corey's team. Red Lot is within our water resources, essentially all water that's flowing above ground and stormwater. Aaron Pingle. There are certain items that I like, I like to call game changers. A game changer for J E O is we have a dedicated funding team. Kurt knows the tremendous amount of funding Danny does, I dabble in it. Yet we have a funding specialist that's dedicated per state. Aaron is our Iowa funding expert. Game changer. And lastly, Jeremy Kemmer. Jeremy is with our transportation team. Jeremy's located in Coralville. The smiley guy that's here and on top again, I live in North Liberty. We represent a few of our remote staff. And back to that previous page, we have 17 brick and mortar offices. Jeremy was unable to be here this evening due to a previous personal commitment out of state. Yet I know some of the team met Jeremy last fall. With that, I'll pause. And what questions or comments do you have thus far before I turn it over to Kurt?
Who made this wonderful booklet? Cause I would like to give them props. Communication professional, this is amazing.
Thank you very much.
You don't have to answer.
It's not the three of us. It's one of our 400 resources that's here to serve and support what we do. Thank you for that. Other comments or questions before we transition?
And I am curious about the funding lead position you've mentioned. Is that somebody that is involved with project management as far as looking for possible sources, resources? Or how does that work? How do you utilize the funding lead?
The direct answer is yes. And there are regular, consistent funding opportunities that, you know, based upon type of municipal need. Might be a search grant is one example. In addition, we will, that funding specialist will research other non-traditional funds and options. Not only will we do that research for you, we will assist in preparing those applications for our clients.
So these are all the individuals at our disposal when we're utilizing like some capital improvement or whatever, infrastructure upgrade, whatever.
Yes.
Okay.
Great questions. With that, I'll turn it over to Kurt.
Very good. Thank you, Gene. So as mentioned earlier, I'm a project manager within our water wastewater electrical group or W W E for short. And one of the nice things about the water wastewater electrical group is that not only do we have that electrical department. Electrical group in our company, but we have them in the department as well. And when we are doing water and wastewater infrastructure work, there's just a lot of electrical componentry that goes with that. And so that's a very tight relationship between, between our team members. So from discussions with your city staff and interviewing your capital improvement plan, we've had a chance to kind of look through some of the priority projects that you have upcoming. From work on your wells, the wastewater treatment facility, the addition of generators to your, your lift stations as well. And we really have experience in each of those areas. As Gene mentioned, a full service engineering firm with lots of expertise within our water wastewater and electrical group as well as the company as a whole. So one project we can go and just highlight is the, the deep water wells we did in the Barnumville project, that was an 850 foot deep well into the Mississippian aquifer. So a different from Jordan, but a deep well regardless, along with the rehabilitation of their existing wells to bring those. Insert some new life back into them with some new casing and then things of that nature. And we also changed out their manual read, manual read water meters to a radio read setup, which I understand is, is a situation here as well. That your staff spends a lot of time making those readings. So experience in each of those things. And in the discussions with your staff, really solidifying your water supply would be a primary focus, just because it's really the lifeblood of the community. In addition to that, we've also designed several oxidation ditch wastewater treatment plants as well. On the one that's highlighted on, on your page there is in Waverly, Nebraska, very similar sized community, again, here to, to West Liberty. And last but not least, also I've done a lot of projects in the city of Omaha. That project in particular was the rehabilitation of, of 11 different lift station projects across the city. Replacing pumps, new electrical controls, new discharge piping, things of that nature. So, but regardless of the project type, one of the things that we really like to highlight is our focus on operators. So whenever we come into a new community, and this was mentioned in, in the meeting with city staff. We really like to begin the project, working with the operators. They're the ones that are operating the equipment on a day in, day out basis. They know where the problems are. They know where the challenges are. In a lot of cases, they know where potential solutions, what those could be as well. And so we always want to take that learning approach whenever we start a new project, identifying what are those opportunities? What's that existing knowledge that we can learn from first before we start to apply what we think the solutions may be?
That'll go and turn it over to Dan. All right. So on the next page, on page six, just briefly hit on streets and stormwater. So we have a transportation group and then when I was in Atoma, I got to work on streets and stormwater projects and then those. And even though I lead the construction services department now, the Atoma project one was a little unique. The, this area of town had previously had combined sewers. So a sewer separation had already been done in this area. And we wanted to be able to save all that infrastructure that they put in there. So we designed that street to use the existing intakes and existing storm sewer. So we had to make some adjustments there. So everything had worked without having to replace stuff that they'd recently done. And then this Ankeny one here, that was, that was a channel through Ankeny and it was starting to cause erosion problems in people's backyards. There was a sanitary line there that you could, was exposed. There was a house that was getting kind of scary close to the channel. If it continued to grow, they'd have some structural problems with the house on stability. So the project we worked with the city and, and we met with landowners on that and did easements, permanent easements, temporary easements. Were able to realign the channel, do some stabilization rock, retaining wall and, and tried to make it, you know, pleasing as well aesthetically for what we could there. But at the end of that project, everything stabilized there and no more issues. I'll flip next to the, to the other page, number seven. So community engagements, sustainability and innovation. So we have a planning engagement team. They'll assist us with public house, open house meetings, meeting with public, meeting with businesses, residents. They'll, they'll make a lot of graphics for these meetings and help us that so we can show them what we're, we're talking about and just instead of telling them. And then we do on, on certain projects, if it makes sense, we look at green infrastructure, if it fits, if that's something the city's interested in, we try to incorporate that. And then, you know, a big important factor is making sure that, that any design we do is, is long-term, not going to be a maintenance nightmare. I'm sure you guys will appreciate not having to go out there and spend hours on something that got put in there. It might look great, but if you have to spend, you know, too many hours over the next 10 years maintaining that thing, it's not worth it. So we do consider those and make sure everybody's aware of any long-term maintenance considerations. And then a holistic perspective, you know, we look at the big picture on that, how everything fits together. You, you get into the streets and you have your sewers and your water mains and we'll make sure all that's good before we put a brand new street over top of something. So we take a big, big view of everything. Example of that would be the Mount Vernon project. We're doing a, a street skate for them. We're currently in the design phase of that. So the pictures you see here are renderings that we've done. And just give an example and help show the community of what that's going to look like when the project is done. And then with that, well, if you have any questions on any of the projects that we talked about before we continue on.
How relevant is your communication strategy?
It, it varies by project. So, you know, for the street skate project, we, we, it's pretty heavily involved on the communication one. Because it's downtown businesses and then parking concerns, you know, nobody wants to lose a parking space, but we want to make it look good. So it's, it's pretty heavy on that one. But when you get to a project, like say out at the wastewater treatment plant, if it's not going to impact residents. Very little. It's probably going to be your public hearings at the, at the council meeting. If there's a bigger desire, we can do those, but where the, where the projects are going to be in the, the public eye and have a lot more input. We, we do, we can do a pretty heavy one with renderings and concepts and, and open house meetings and get public input and take polls and we have a lot of that capability.
And as far as residential, what, what do you, what is your strategy on residential?
For like a residential street project or?
Yeah, anything.
Generally we'll have like open houses. One of the things I like to do is have it close to where they're at. If, if you can find a space that's going to be able to have anybody and have it usually in the evening and we'll start, you know, five thirtyish and go till eight or so. So that way people don't have to take off work during the day to come and it gives them a more open time. We'll have, we'll have graphics there and show them on that. Generally speaking, when I've done residential ones, they're really only concerned how it affects their house. They want to see the whole project, but they don't generally have as much interest in the whole project versus how it's going to affect their house and construction and are they going to have to walk? So we do, we'll do one or two, whatever's needed, public open house meetings. Try to cater to them, make it close and convenient so that they're able to come to the, to the meeting and not have takeoff work.
And then do you strive to have somebody onsite from beginning to end?
Of the project? We, we can. We have a full construction team on that. So if the city, we've, I've done it different ways where sometimes the city staff or a city wants to take that portion on. And we will do assistance where needed or we do provide full time inspection on it. So it does probably depend on the project. So on a project by project need of, of what would be done. But generally, yes. I mean, if you're going to put that much, you know, money and time into a design and a project and investment, the last thing you want is the contractor cutting corners. So we definitely want to make sure that it's going to be covered one way or another. So we know you're getting what you paid for.
And your familiarity with these grade four wastewater treatment plant, an R O water system, what is your?
I'm going to let Kurt answer that question.
Utilize any geodata or how well you play with EPA D N R?
Yeah. So great relationships with the D N R. They're the gatekeepers from a regulatory perspective. And just really helping our, our communities understand what the regulatory requirements are and just walking them through that process. Whether it's a nutrient reduction strategy, anti-dags, facility plans, development of plans and specs. Each of those kind of have their own little nuances. And so just making sure there's clear communication about what those next ups are. What do you, what do you anticipate for review time, all those types of things, walking, working through that. To come back to your grade four, yeah, we, we design activated sludge treatment, treatment facilities. Like I mentioned, we've designed a handful of different oxidation ditches. Ironically, most of those are, are in Nebraska, but designed a number of oxidation dishes as well. So familiar with that, that technology. And we've put in a number of reverse osmosis water treatment plants as well. So that, if you want to go ahead and flip to the, to next page, it's got the, the green field up on the upper right-hand corner. So in addition to just the technical know-how of the project and getting the technical details right, there's a lot of other ancillary aspects to a project that actually help you feel like the project's a success. And so in recognition of that, one of the things that we'll always do at a project kickoff meeting is, is talk about what are your specific measures of success? What are your critical success factors? And so one of the things that consistently comes up is just clearing consistent communication. And so one tool that we use to help facilitate that, particularly for the communities that we are the city engineer of. Is there can be a lot of different projects that are going on in the community at one particular time. So we have this monthly status report that we've used. It's not a revolutionary document. You can look at the example that's there. But it, it's a very practical tool to just let everybody know, here's the status of each particular project. Here's any action items that are required either on the city's part or J E O's part. Just again, just making sure that everybody's on the same page. So the example that you have before you is actually from the city of Greenfield. We were actually selected as their city engineer last fall. Kind of walking them through their FEMA recovery from the tornado last year. And so that monthly status report, should we be selected here in, in West Liberty is something we would intend to implement. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Gene.
Great segue. As Kurt just shared about communication and communicate, communicate, communicate. And to say we're perfect at it, we're not perfect at it, yet we're highly aware of it. The, the guy speaking here is highly aware of it from the experiences that I've had. And use the example with the street project is that in terms of construction observation. Just a simple, Adam, FYI, Monday, Wednesday, Friday this week. Your team's going to be on deck for helping with construction observation. So add a complete plan appropriately versus, oh, somebody just forgot to communicate. So the further drill home that communication piece. And I'm surprised that the buzzer hasn't gone off and I know Sherry's got the timer going.
So good.
Okay, we're good. We're going to flip to slide nine. I think we're doing good here, team.
Yeah.
In summary, why J E O? Couple high reasons and highlights for that. No cost transition. We spoke to this in our response in the longer proposal is that my time, the rest of our time, we know there's going to be ramp up as we engage with the new community. We aren't going to nickel and dime and charge you for that time. There's a tremendous amount of learning that we have to do. To get all of our team up to speed. That's a no cost transition. Learn and teach culture. Kurt referenced that. Your teams here, your operators, your community, you know it better than us. We need to learn. As we learn and become more aware and familiar with West Liberty, then can allow us to take some best practices and ideas and come to some, provide some teaching. And lastly, once again, in our, in J E O's DNA, municipal engineering communities across the Midwest and Iowa. Communities just like West Liberty, that's in our DNA. It makes sense for us. Thank you again for this opportunity. Happy to address you this evening. Final comments or questions that you have for us?
How do you work with multicultural, multiracial communities?
How, how do we? We engage with all. We have many footprints across, I'll provide examples across the tribal nations and tribes and Kansas cities and Omahas. That so, and certainly aware of, you know, the different ethnicities and makeup of the West Liberty community. So not something new to us and we would embrace that. What else?
About one minute.
Congratulations on photographs that made Atoma and Mount Vernon look relatively flat.
Right. Well, full disclosure, the Atoma one was on the south side. So it was really flat there. So it was actually a challenge on those intakes.
Great job on Ankeny. I part with that. That, that was a challenging time for that city council room with that. So that looks really good. So I just had a nice walkway along.
One, one final snippet. As Mayor brought up photos, I thought he might've been mentioning about some of the photos in our proposal that had West Liberty in it. A few weeks ago, yours truly was here in your community and I would, I'm pleased to report to you that your fire chief. As I was taking pictures, he promptly walked out of his office and addressed me. Had a blessed opportunity to meet him, introduce myself and thanked him for doing what he needed to do, which is there's someone strange taking pictures. We should ask. He came and asked me. So hats off to what he did and those nice things.
Aaron, yeah.
All right. Thank you. I look forward to hearing from you. Any follow-up questions, let us know.
Yep. And council, Mayor Council, I just, I communicated with J E O that we will be hearing presentations this evening. I had a staff meeting today and recommended that, and asked that all of the recommendations for the engineers, Bichon, industry and Adam by Friday. So we can present a recommendation to council to review and then decision on May 6th.
And Lee, so in that as well, this isn't necessarily a question for them, but will you have like cost comparisons too for the council of like what their rates and stuff are?
Okay.
Yep. We'll break it down for you and, and include in that why staff, where their recommendation is and where they see and, you know. And their interaction with the teams and get a full report over to you folks in time to review. Thank you.
We have left multiple copies up with Sherry. She's going to distribute these to you. A full services binder of all of our services. And great reading and expect to have this on your nightstand. So we're going to do it. And I'll see how you're doing again. So Sherry has these. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You too. Thank you. We'll follow up, Gene.
Really good question.
Think I got everybody. Adam, do you want one for us?
He's invested in a TV because I couldn't really put the whole computer screen. And he's like, having a presentation or even just being able to see he's on for.
Eventually it will be installed in permanent council chambers.
Yes.
Prevent how it's going to bite, but.
Yeah, it's short.
Do you want to send it to Brittany before the people can pull it up?
Hi, how's it going?
Good. Getting rested up from our, did you get rested up?
No. Those are long days.
Very good, very productive days.
Good. I'm glad you guys.
Brittany and I talked all the way home.
Yes. And that's why we want, encourage teams to agree, right? So you guys can.
I just go to the same.
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
So it's just a little handout. I'll, I'll probably wander a little bit. Yeah, you can take the, you can take the table. Little where else?
Yeah, we, we tried to come and do the podium, but somebody put it away.
That's all right.
Well, we'll go ahead and get started a little bit while we're waiting on that. It's just a small presentation. Couple of slides just for something to look at as we talk. We, first, we want to thank all of you for giving us the opportunity and being here tonight. We're excited here. Me personally, a little bit more than others. I'm Lenny Larson with I S G. I will be the main point of contact and the city engineer for I S G with the city of West Liberty. My role will be essentially making sure communications are going well, making sure we're meeting the city's expectations, holding our team accountable during those processes. And then making sure that we understand the city's goals and visions as we're working through this. There's going to be a transition period. We'll kind of talk about that a little later. And again, we're just really excited to be here. I've been with I S G for 13 years. And again, we're just really excited to be here. I've been with ISG for 13 years. I've helped lead different communities throughout the state of Iowa and really the upper Midwest region and similar services for those communities. I also helped lead our water wastewater group. So I will be actively involved in a lot of those those projects when we get into the water distribution, the water treatment system, storage wastewater, of course, be involved in that and just something that we're really excited about. I apologize. I'm a little nervous. I recognize a lot of people here. So it's getting the nerves going a little bit more than I normally have. So but I'll go ahead and pass it.
I'll go next. Okay, Brittany Morales. I am actually an economic development practitioner. I'm not an engineer and I'm not an architect. I look different at our firm and other firms like ours. And that's that's a good thing because it shows when we talk about why is ISG different because they employ people like me. Before coming to ISG, I ran a statewide economic development program on behalf of rural utility providers. Actually, West Liberty, Liberty Communications was one of our members and I've actually done some some economic development work here in your community. I'm really passionate. I've dedicated my career to Rule Vitality. I am a rural Iowan. I came and was born in Rockville City is where I hail from. And so being able to help communities who want to help themselves, right? So really focusing on that growth and development and the partnerships and connections that I help bring communities is something that I enjoy doing and I now do for ISG. So.
Nick Frederickson, one of our project managers at the firm. I've been there for just short of 27 years. If I can do math anymore, so round out to 30, whatever you want, but been around a long time. Spent spent their career working with communities really throughout the state of Iowa. Kind of touched all the borders in Iowa from the smallest of sub 100 people up to the largest for the city of Des Moines. So it kind of spans everything there. Worked hand in hand with Lenny over all of the 13 years he's been here from his day one to today. So we've kind of been partnered on a number of projects from streets, water, wastewater, parks, trails, anything under the sun, we've partnered with and working through communities here. So my focus is really helping the city's plan, set up and execute projects is how I work directly with the city and I'm also coordinating with the teams on the backend, helping hold Lenny accountable and helping hold our teams accountable as well to make sure that we're responsive. We're always looking out for you as a community. You guys are always going to come first, whether on the economic development side or whatever, ways to piece that in. But making sure your interests are always in first, not ours. So that's kind of been my my spiel over the last two and a half, three decades. So. Yeah, it's super passion. I'm also a rural Iowan. I was born and raised in north central Iowa in a town of about 300 people, which barely is a blip on the map anymore. You know, it's going the wrong way, but super passionate there. I understand Lenny, you know, working for, I still work with my hometown. On it, it might only be 300 people, but it it carries a different weight when the peers that you grew up with, that you're standing here talking to. So I completely understand everybody sitting.
I remember you when you were 10. I remember that, you know.
Too often than not, so but yeah, we we really appreciate it. We're really excited about the opportunity. And as you guys come through this, there's going to be a question that you all have somewhere, something that you want to learn from us. Feel free to just ask anytime. We we prefer it to be more conversational overall. So don't hesitate to jump in. I know there's a few minutes at the end, but if it's on the top of your head, get it out there. We'll do our do our best to answer it for you overall.
So one thing we want to talk about is a little bit about ISG. We're a multidisciplinary firm. Full service, like like Nick and Brittany have both mentioned, we we work with a lot of municipalities throughout the state of Iowa, touching really all four corners of the state and also in the upper Midwest. We do a lot of work in. The services we offer is architecture, civil engineering, ranging pretty much everything you can think of with civil engineering. The only thing we don't really touch is geotechnical engineering, but we'll partner with different firms or whoever the city's preferences there. And then the other aspect is is we we work in different business units that we can help with the city as they are looking to to grow and promote economic development throughout the city. We have 500 professionals, 100 plus Iowa based professionals, and then we have three offices in in Iowa specifically, the two closest being Waterloo and Des Moines. The three of us are out of Des Moines, but we will have individuals that work with the city that are also out of the Waterloo office. So we're working with more and more in communities over in this area of the state. Will and Eldridge are a couple, just to name a few as examples. But like I said, it's something that we're very eager. We're very excited to be able to be here tonight and and discuss this with you. And if you have any questions, feel free to pipe up anytime.
Municipal engineering approach. So this is where we're always your advocate. We want to be that extension of your staff. We want to encourage, really encourage you guys to pick up the phone and call us. It's we are professionals, yes, but treat us like staff in all honesty. We we want to scrub in. We want to learn everything that your staff knows, that your treatment operators know, that you guys know as management, as financials, as community engagement across the board. So we really want to be ingrained with the community. Once we're, once we know that and we're in, we're able to help better advise, make good suggestions, recommendations, and make sure that we're we're solid on the planning point. So that way we can execute on the delivery aspect as well, all the way through that last closeout stage on any projects that you guys may have in the future. As part of that, Lenny said, we we have a team behind us. There's there's three faces here. Do have done similar things over their careers here and one is, you know, got her specific role that she excels at. But there's 490 plus professionals behind us that we pull in as needed for us to make sure that we have the best team for you guys moving forward on any project there. So really that that piece is we're always your advocate for everything on the city and we're an extension of your staff. We want to be just, talk to your staff just like you would us.
And a couple of other things to note with that is some of the things we like to do for the city is we work with a lot of communities throughout the state. So if you have questions and we can pull resources and examples from other communities that we work with, we like to share that information. So you're able to make those best decisions, be the most informed during that point. Another thing that we like to do that we we take pride in is we operate a little differently in regards to working with city staff. So if you have someone new, we have people that have been former city employees. We also have operators on staff, which is a big deal when you when you have your own facilities that you're operating. And one thing that we like to do is be able to offer that operational training and support aspect to to communities to be able to give them that aspect. So something that we we like to pride ourselves in in that respect. And and another thing just to add is we understand communication is probably one of the biggest pain points that can occur. And this is something that we want to talk about, talk through. So we understand that will kind of be the central point with a lot of things going on in the city. I I will be the the central point of contact for that. So one thing that we want to do is be able to make sure we're communicating with city staff, the council, making sure that you guys have the information you need to be able to make those informed decisions, be able to be available around the clock to be able to answer those questions if you have any. It's not very uncommon for, I I work on the water wastewater side a lot. So operators, they got to work on the weekends. It's something that that occurs. And there's many times over the weekend that they'll have a an upset at their plant, whatever that may be. And I'll get a phone call and help troubleshoot that. We also have other people on our staff that actually have operational experience, operate those plants that are able to do that. But then the other thing is we want to be available for when you need us. So for council meetings, whether we need to be here in person or or if we need to provide a report, we're always going to be providing that information to to the city staff. So that's available for the council. And if there is a question and we happen to not be here, feel free to be able to pick up the phone and call me during that time. It's it's not an issue whatsoever. In fact, I'll be doing that afterwards because I have another council meeting that I have to attend after this presentation. With residents, one of the things we understand going through projects that it can impact neighborhoods such as street reconstructions. So one of the things we like to do is work with the city. If there's town hall meetings that need to be made to be able to communicate with the city, help them understand the goals of the project and what's going on. We're happy to do that. We're also during that, we like to be able to make sure we're providing communication strategies for the city, whether it's with media, door hangers. Nick's got a nickname with the city staff already about being the door hanger guy. So one of those things, and then if the city wants to post that on their website, we'll be able to provide a link and keep that updated as the projects progress. And then I'll kind of hand it over to Brittany to talk about communication.
Yeah. So as we talk about communication, my job is I am working alongside our technical experts like Lenny, like Nick, right? And so when you guys have development going on, because you guys have some housing development that you already have in place and that's that's a that's a big win for a rural community. But as we're working with private developers, right? What is that that communication like? What, you know, reviewing maybe that development agreement? What incentives does our city have in place currently? Do they make sense? Things of that nature, right? Making sure that I'm cued into what you guys are doing and what they're doing. So we're working cohesively.
So roles and responsibility, we've kind of touched this on on this a little bit, but we want to be able to be an extension of the city staff, be there as a good resource for you. Don't be afraid to pick up the phone and call us at any time. We also want to be able that we're we're being held accountable, making sure we're providing the service that you need. I know a lot of a lot of the folks on city staff, so I know they won't be afraid to give me a call and tell me if we're not doing something well. So one thing that we want to make sure is that the city feels comfortable enough with us to be able to have those hard conversations. But also we want, we're eager to be able to fulfill those needs and execute well on projects when needed. Another thing that we want to do is be able to help mitigate the headaches that you have occur, whether it's during a project, you have people coming in. Like I said, I'll throw back at Nick a little bit that he's the door hanger guy, but it will have one of our individuals on that project. It will have our contact information. So you can direct them to us to get a status update on the project. Or if there's something going wrong, whether a part of the property got damaged during your project, whatever that may be, we want to be able to help alleviate some of those headaches that the the city sees during that. And then we also want to be able to help amplify and support the city staff as they're going through that progress. So.
Yeah, perfect. So when we talk about an economic development approach, I kind of touched on it a little bit, right? But it's thinking about one of the things I like about ISG is yes, we do a really good job of listening to you and it's your community and assisting you with that. But our team is not afraid to think outside of the box and understand the bigger picture, not just looking down, but kind of seeing the long term goals of your community. And so that looks like if we're going to already be doing an infrastructure project, does that mean that we are positioning it? Because we know in five years, 10 years, this is a prime spot to open up a new development, right? So we're already in there. How do we kind of structure that? So it makes sense also financially, but but we're helping you think bigger than just where we're at today. Also, those public private partnerships. So in addition to my work still today with ISG doing what I do, I'm on the board of the Iowa Rural Development Council, Keep Iowa Beautiful, and the governor's empowerment Iowa initiative. Now, I don't say that to talk about myself. That is not the last thing I want to do. I say that because my experience in economic development is our rural communities, the ones that are doing really well, they have people and partnerships and resources in their corner, right? So I can help and do help use my connections to a lot of people who can also help you get things done, right? Bringing them to the table with what you guys are looking to do. And then, yeah, just making sure that we're supporting your goals and making sure that you have goals, you know, a vision of a rural community. Where are you going? Do you know where you're going? And are all of you rowing your boats in the same direction? Because that is how communities get things done. And that is what I like to help communities do. So again, West Liberty has a lot of of great things going on that I I would love to be a part of. You guys are very fortunate from my my travels and time around the state, right? You have all of the benefits of being next to a rural, a metro community. You have all the challenges of being next to, of being a rural community next to a metro community, right? And so I think, you know, everything from housing to your industrial park, right? Trying to make sure, you know, that looks and is being marketed and and you have the team that you need. Are you listing that in the places it should be? So just thinking through all of those things for that long term vision of your community.
Awesome. We're going to talk a little bit about, so we'll get to this one next. We don't really have a slide for this, but just kind of execution, execution of a project over the duration of the timeline here. Just I'll try to spend two quick minutes on it. So we're going to pick a a project in Humboldt, Iowa. It's very near, dear to me because where I grew up on right next to it here. But this was a community vision of parts they wanted to improve downtown. So they have a pretty much a farmer market road through downtown, businesses about five blocks long, overall four and a half, five blocks. Was redone actually in 2003, two, two, actually 2002, sorry. And it it needed some freshening up, right? Kind of starting to see this repair. So start with community visioning. Went through that, started with steering committees, said, okay, how can we fund this? What can we do? So we started working through the funding aspect of it. They actually have a TIF that does the sunsets for their downtown business districts. We're able to leverage that to fund the project up to 1.6 million dollars. That didn't get the whole thing. And we're only talking about streetscaping. So building fronts, the back of curves, just the sidewalk through the stretch. So started going down that path, steering committee, public engagement, business engagement, how to fund it, how to leverage other funding for equipment. So we all do street lighting. So we use another fund to fund the street lining as coming into that. So that way the TIF could pay for the install, but couldn't afford the street lighting. During that development, we realized that, hey, this is a farmer market road. We can give state transportation block grant funding for this because we're over 3,000 people. We applied for that and we won that. So that was in 2000. We did construction in 2021 on the streetscaping piece. Over it, we waited until this year for the federal funding to do the overlay, which is about 1.4 million dollars of work there. Through this whole duration, we're talking 2018 to 2025, we have about three to three, three to three and a half million dollars of the work, million dollars of DOT funding. And in the end, we have removed traffic lights, improved pedestrians. They've maxed out their facade program and they don't have any empty storefronts through their entire downtown. So the whole thing, that's Humboldt, Iowa.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, yeah, it's actually listed on the placemat I sent out there. So that's from 2018 through there now. So it takes time, but continue to plan and put those pieces in place. So.
We'll go ahead and just start talking about the transition approach, try and keep this short. But one thing that we like to do is be able to meet with the city, city staff. Again, we've met with them, have a basic understanding what their their goals and vision are for the city, but also take time to meet with the council and the mayor. We want to understand what your vision is, what your goals are. Look at your CIP. We've had a a chance to review it to a certain degree and then meet with you and make sure that's still your priority. Let's move in forward. Another thing is we want to take a tour of everything, all your facilities and everything that you have planned out moving forward. And and also be able to gather and review all available information and then kind of get that that CIP kind of fine tuned and then be able to progress. While we're doing all this, this is something that we don't charge for because one of the things we want to be able to do is make sure that we understand the city and what you're looking to do and be able to move that forward. So as part of it, we have to learn how you operate, what your goals are, what your vision are, and that's very important before we actually start moving forward and progressing through through projects with the city and planning.
I should figure out the little door hanger approach. They keep kind of joking around here. So there's probably two to 3,000 plus door hangers out in Western Moines last year where we notify all the residents and businesses ahead of upcoming construction. They all have my name in them. So that's where this whole thing started about. So we're super, super proactive in notification of the public from public information to public notices, to PSAs, to individual door hangers on every door, to biweekly or monthly newsletters through the project. So the the goal of that is the outreach, right? If if we can listen, we're going to be better on our projects, less headache for you guys. So but yeah, my, I don't know how many people over there have my.
I see that you have a bilingual engineer, engineer resource. Is that in Spanish?
It is, yes.
So like those door hangers may.
Weekend, yeah, weekend.
Spanish too?
Yeah, I'd invite that. Yeah, we actually have two. So Lupe and Jake. Jake does not look like his photo is that, but he's completely.
He's Polish, but.
Yeah, he is Polish, but he's.
And my husband's first language is Spanish. So he could, he doesn't work for ISG, but I could always make him.
Like I said, those are additional resources there. So yeah, we're, we're happy to help.
So one of the things I just wanted to hit on quickly is a question that came up when we met with the city was why would West Liberty? Unfortunately, I was told I was not able to answer. I'd like to give my reason for it a little bit and then let them share their reasons with with the council. But the big reason for me is I grew up in West Liberty. I'm from West Liberty. I have family that still lives here. I'm still active with the community. I I do visit a lot. And one of the things that I want to be able to do is help the city grow and succeed moving on into the future. It's very important to me. I don't think you'll find another engineer that has the intrinsic motivation that I do have for this. And and I'm just really excited. I can tell I'm a little nervous right now, but I'm really excited to be able to be here and and present in front of all of you and have this opportunity.
Perfect. So I'm going to, I'm going to touch back on kind of what I started with. I'm from rural Iowa. I've dedicated my entire career to Rule Vitalian, helping our small towns across the state. And there's something really, really special about rural rural communities, but there's something really, really special about rural communities who have momentum going. And it's 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 something you can feel. And so when I look at, I've said, I've done a little bit of of work in your in your community before. But when you look at at West Liberty and the abundance of things you've already kind of done, you mean, you're out in front already of a lot of rural communities, right? And so the chance to help take West Liberty and say, how do we position you to be a really, maybe a really great place where people can, you know, if they're working in. where people can, you know, if they're working in the metro, live in West Liberty and have that quality of life and feel that momentum, right? And so that's a big part of why I would love to work here. I also, with the last name Morales, love that you're a welcoming, diverse community and would love to be a part of what you guys are doing here.
Go ahead. I'm just going to say I was born and raised in rural Iowa, and that's probably it. A huge passion for rural Iowa. I may work with the largest city in town, but they're in the state. Uh, I just love rural Iowa and the challenges you have and excited to um find success.
Uh, well, as a small rural ag area, we own pretty much all of our utilities. So that really says something about our community. But I I'm interested to know to what degree are you innovated and outside the box as far as community planning and infrastructure, infrastructure upgrading?
Yeah, so I I'll go ahead and give an example quickly. So we're currently working with a small community over in western Iowa by Dennis and Dow City. We partnered with the University of Iowa there to be able to come up with a a different way of looking at wastewater. Um, uh, and one of the things that that is hard for smaller communities in the state of Iowa is wastewater and water because those happen to be two of the most expensive assets that you have. And it's something that you're required by, you know, regulatory agencies to be able to perform and meet certain criteria. So there we partnered with them to look at a different alternative for wastewater treatment. That's a little more sustainable. And we're currently went through a pilot program. The University of Iowa helped fund part of that project. So it's saving the city considerable amount of money. And um typically, they'd be looking at a four to five million dollar project for a community of five hundred folks. Uh, if you go to the the traditional route of what you do for wastewater, where this could be a million to a million and a half, which is, which is much less expensive and a lot better off for those residents there. So that's one of the ways that we look at it. That's also another thing we like to look at, different types of grants that are available, different types of funding mechanisms that are out there. But we also like to lean on our experience with other communities, what they're doing and being able, does that fit here? And and see if that's something that we can do here, so.
And I'll take that one step further too. One of the reasons why I joined ISG and it it's like you you get all this great engineering and they're excellent at what they do. We also come with a bench of landscape architects, not just one, not just two. A bench of landscape architects, architects, planners. We also work in the upper Midwest. So we see things and trends that are going on in Wisconsin, in Minnesota, in South Dakota, and those folks are able to come to your community if you so choose and be a team and do this visioning work. I mean, the creative stuff that these people have thought of in these sessions of what a community and attainable, not so far-fetched, but innovative, but attainable, right? And and so I think that's one of the benefits of our firm is that we come with not just engineering, but all the other things and the creatives that it takes to really think about your community in a really innovative, strategic way. At the Iowa Rural Summit, uh, that was just last week and and Lee was there, Director Durham, when I interviewed her uh on that, said what we we asked her, what is the number one needle-moving thing that our rural community should be working on in the next year or the next summit? She said having a vision and a plan. There's nothing that if you don't have that, that's baseline, and we have people who are really good at that.
It's good at recreational design as well.
Yep, yep. We have an entire sports and rec uh business unit dedicated to that.
I'm thinking water, but.
That would be, that's on me.
Yeah, no, who are, I'm thinking you're thinking of athletics like uh pool and and splash pads. Yeah, we do that. We got plenty of experience in that realm too.
Oh, by the way, University of Iowa is in the eighties.
Oh, do we have a table?
You are not joining our team as the reviewer. We will pay you X amount, no, no, an hour.
There's too many engineers that go to Iowa State.
Iowa State and I'm a hockey fan, so. That's what it is. So uh, any other questions from council, staff? Beat us up a little bit, feel free.
All I need to know is your door hanger.
Got it. You got an example too. Um, no, it's, like I said, we're 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 super excited about the opportunity here. Um, working alongside Lenny over the past decade plus, um, seeing what his growth, what we can do and what we've done in communities. We're we're like, that's just super excited to be here um for the, just the opportunity wise. Um, you guys got a tough choice ahead of you on that. And uh, we're excited to be in the in the group right now.
Thank you.
So ISG team, what I've done, um, I've communicated our next steps are, um, we had a staff meeting today and we communicated with staff to make their recommendations to Adam and Sherri by the end of the week. And then from that, we'll draft our recommendations to council for their review next week and then plan on an announcement in in our engine agreement, May sixth meeting. Okay, so and so we'll keep you in the loop. If they happen to have any additional questions, um, it's quite possible. I'll just connect you folks to them directly. So they can just have that direct conversation.
Yeah, happy to help.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.